What's her name, Lisa? We should take her out of order. What does she got?
No. I told her to tell you no.
Good evening, everyone. My apologies for being late. I am the one responsible. But could we please, today is, today is September 2nd. This is a regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Could we please rise to salute our flag to begin the meeting? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk kindly call a roll?
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Ross Sikowicz?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mr. Gendron?
Mayor Elliott?
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Six present, one absent. Quorum is present. We'll begin the meeting. We have, we have minutes. We have approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting from Wednesday, August 19th. Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowicz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, the minutes are accepted and placed on file. Next section of the agenda, we have memorials. We have the first memorial. There was actually another memorial that did not make the agenda, so I'd like to, after this one, I'll recognize Mr. Conway. But the first one is Maria L. Silva Cunha, Sister of Manuel Silva McAvene School Senior Custodian, Agostino Silva McAvene School Junior Custodian, and LeBlanc School Custodian, Danny Silva. I'd like to recognize Mr. Conway for another memorial.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the second memorial tonight is Saipan Sim, who was the mother, was the mother of Rith Young, former city councilman, presently guidance counselor at Lowell High School. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Thank you, Mrs. School Committee. Anything else, any other memorials that didn't make the agenda, considering we only meet once, once a month? I also received that email from Mr. Conway, so thank you. Could we all please rise from a moment of silence, and could we please darken the chambers? May they both rest in peace. Could I ask Ms. Martin for you to take the chair? We're moving on to the next item. We have motions. First motion of the evening is by myself, so I'll step down and...
So our first motion by Mayor Rodney Elliott, requesting that the superintendent look into and provide analysis on the possibility of changing district into neighborhood schools, neighborhood school zones. Seconded by Mr. Leary, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. So, I do know, I understand, you know, it was over forty years ago that with desegregation and Brown v. Board Education, that in an effort to equalize and give every child an equal opportunity and make all of our schools available to all children, there was, again, there was federal statute along with various court opinions to do this. But, you know, the essence of this motion, Mr. Superintendent, is I'm looking for you to see if, I mean, personally, I feel not only are our entire school district diversified, but our city is. So there is no, I don't feel there's any segregation in any neighborhood in any school, and certainly in our district. And in light of that, in ninety-six, I know there was, the requirement for, for school busing was dropped. So there's a number of items that play into this, but I personally think that in light of the fact that there is no segregation, we have completely integrated city, community, school district, that we should start taking a look at neighborhood schools, neighborhood zones, district zones. And I know it's going to take some work, so I look to you to provide an analysis, certainly on the benefits that I think not only financial, but also on a social nature. I do know, and we've seen a number of new parents moving into the district presuming, you know, they're going to send their child to the closest school. And I know that my office has received a number of complaints in the last several months where they moved to a certain section of the city, and they've put in their choices, and their, their children or child end up going to a school on the completely other side of the city. So, and I think this has been a growing issue, quite frankly, myself. I certainly have heard it from constituents throughout the city over, you know, my, my tenure as a city council. I'm sure members of the school committee have heard the same concerns. You know why? I have a child that's on a bus for, you know, forty-five minutes or thirty minutes going across the city. And it just, it just to me, I mean, that's, that's first and foremost. Secondarily, I think there's a practical need to take a look at the placement of our children in parts of the city. Again, I believe there's complete parity, and if you look at the Level One, the Level Two, the Level Three schools, it's, it's not in any particular section of the city, any certain neighborhood. It's, it's not geographic based, and I think if you look at some of the better performing schools, i.e. the Merklin, it's in one of our poorer neighborhoods, and it's, it's a, it's a very well-performing school, the Robinsons. And the list goes on and on. So I would like you to take a look at it to see how we can do a better job, and to see if we can go back to neighborhood schools where people are living in a particular section of the city, and they can send their children there. I think our transportation costs continue to skyrocket, and that's something that we have to take a look at. Certainly, I know I've had a conversation with Mr. Dakota, and moving forward, we're looking at increased costs of upwards of, you know, maybe eight hundred thousand dollars last year, something that can be, to me, much better. That money can be used in the classroom, and there's so many other needs rather than transportation where, you know, a neighborhood school, if you will, could, would serve them better. I think it serves a number of social needs. It's really, we can be a leader in this. And every community, every city, we are, you know, it's, it's a combination of neighborhoods, communities and neighborhoods that make us a strong city. And I believe kids, kids sometimes don't even, you know, they don't get to know their neighbors, or, you know, kids down the street because they don't go to the same school, they don't have that relationship. So I'll wrap up on this. I just believe that we are all about supporting strong neighborhoods throughout the city. We have strong community leaders. A community is a group of people. They live together. They have common interests, common values. They share interests and goals. You know, I know we had a discussion just recently about parent-teacher organizations, or PTO, trying to get parents more involved. Well, you know, sometimes you think of the practical nature. Well, if, if they live on, you know, if they live in Pawtucketville and their children are going to the Highlands or Centerville, or they have to go across the city, there's, it's hard to establish relationships, friendships. Even sometimes, logistically, can they get there? Do they have, you know, someone to watch the kids? So I think there's a number of social as well as financial issues that the city can benefit from. I think going to neighborhood schools creates more of a community fabric in all of our different neighborhoods. And I'm not, at, at any level, look to violate any federal estate statute. I think we satisfy it. I understand that we're a choice community, but I think all these things can, can be ironed out, and we can be, you know, we can create stronger communities. And I also think that knowing that we have a space crunch that's coming up, that, that could be, that to some degree can be, can be addressed. So, I know it's a lot, Mr., Mrs. Superintendent, but I would like, I think it makes sense. I think it makes sense. I think it's practical. It's good for our community. It'll strengthen community bonds, and still provide a quality education for every single child, because I, I think that's what we all work at, and we work at it in every school, and I think the statistics support it. So, thank you. I appreciate it, Madam Vice Chair, and I'll wrap it up.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
Thank you. I think it's a great motion. And Dr. Kyle Fawley, you're going to find that a lot of the work's already done. It needs to be updated, because we had a motion, I had a motion two years ago, exactly the same. And one of the issues that you find, that you're going to run into, but can be overcome, is you're going to have our citywide district within the school, which means, for example, the Robinson School is citywide. So if you live in the Highlands, even though the Robinson's over in, in Centerville, you can go to the Robinson School. And then we bus them. And quite frankly, it is a big cost, and it is a time. They're talking forty minutes on a bad day. It could be even more. So there are, those are those challenges. That also affects, we bus for the parochial schools in town. So if you live in Pawtucketville and you happen to go to the Immaculate, we're busing you. So that's an issue you need to work through, because it might have to be something to do with grandfathering some people in as you work through the process. A similar example where we have citizens who live in Pawtucketville that go to the Maury or the Bailey or the Daley, and vice versa, folks from the Highlands going over to the Wang. There's some issues you might have to unwind, you know. How, do we disrupt a child's education? Or do we grandfather certain folks in? I think a lot of those programs, you can work out. It may take a certain amount of time to unwind that. As far as what the mayor said regarding the, the, the social makeup of the community, I think it is, it has become very diverse. I think there might be some areas where, there might be some challenges, but you can always work and improve that and make the adjustments where needed. I think our schools across the board, like you said, the aforementioned Merklin, as well as the Maury and others, are doing much better. We have some improvement in other schools, but that's an issue that we should have no matter what we do. Okay? But I definitely think it's a motion that we've, when I first got on, I had a motion about it. It was a long, long challenge. It wasn't doable then. I had another motion two years ago about it. Assistant Superintendent Murphy worked on it with John Dakota. They had kind of a blueprint as to how it would look like. It wasn't easy. There were challenges, but it's doable. There's a lot of creative ways. And I think there's two issues here, and I think there's social issues with neighborhoods. It's really zones, because there's really no more neighborhood schools. It's a zone. You do have zones. For example, the Washington School, which is in the Highlands, belongs into the, you know, the West Zone or where the, where the Belvedere School is, which doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense, if you think about it. Financially, the busing costs, they're not, John Dakota and his folks have done everything they can do to reduce costs. They've reached an apex. There's going to be no really reductions. There're going to be increases. This is an area where we can start to achieve it. I think you will run into, and I think I said this earlier, you will run into challenges, because there're going to be certain students who utilize, again, Pawtucketville, use the Maury for different reasons. You're going to have to figure a way out to probably grandfather them in or unwind it over time. It'll be a challenge, but it's definitely worth the endeavor. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Just, just very briefly, I think that I also agree that this is certainly a time that we should examine this, and we've talked about it a number of times before. But, you know, it's, it was something that we certainly needed a number of years ago, a desegregation. And I can remember riding the buses to ensure the safety of the, of the students back many, many years ago. And it was, it was very obvious why we needed that, we needed that to take place. But I think, as, as the mayor has pointed out, and also Mr. Leary's pointed out, the times have changed, and that it is an integrated city right now, and that I think it's a lot, it's a lot more even, shall we say? However, I think that when we look into it, it's easy to talk about it on the floor like this, but I know it's not going to be that easy to actually carry it, carry it out, too. But I think it's a, it's great to start to examine this one more time. And I think that when we talk about the neighborhood, neighborhood schools, once again, I think it's extremely important that students know their, their, their friends within a short distance. And I think sometimes what we have now, and, and the example was just given, you could be living in, in Belvedere and sending your, your students to the, your child to, over in the Highlands, which doesn't really make a lot of sense. So I think, again, I'll certainly support this motion. I think it's a good motion. Thank you, Ms. Martin.
If there are no other comments, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, motion passes.
Still on the motions. The next motion of the evening is by Ms. Scott. Request the superintendent add all unanswered motions chronically to the regularly school committee agenda. Seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowicz. Ms. Scott, on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe this is already done on the city side. What I'm looking to see is the open motions on the agenda, that, that way they can be discussed at any time. We currently have motions back to Mayor Murphy's administration, long before our new superintendent. But I thought perhaps making them more visible by putting them on the agenda would remind everyone the age of the motions and maybe help them move along in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion is adopted. Next motion of the evening by Ms. Scott. Again, request superintendent provide a report on all programming changes made after the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget second, budget session. Excuse me. Seconded by Ms. Martin. Ms. Scott?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one's a little bit more complicated than the first one. But I understand that Ed Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three allows principals to make staff hiring decisions at their schools. What I don't agree with is cutting programs after the budget session happened. A decision was made, I know a couple in particular, to cut a second art teacher at our art school and to replace it with a special ed teacher after the budget session. It's my understanding that similar cuts were made at other schools after the budget session as, as well, including, I was told, a health teacher at the Wang. We recently approved a STEM school, and I don't think anyone here would agree that it would be okay to find out a year from now that they're cutting the technology teacher or the engineering teacher or whatever's related to that school. So I do think that decision belongs with the school committee, not the actual hiring decision, but the vision or the programming decision. If there was a need for an additional staff member, they should have came forward to the school committee through their site council and told us that they needed funding for additional special ed teachers. So again, I don't think this should have been a private decision, and I would just ask for your support on the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Further discussion on the motion, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I'm certainly going to support this motion, and I, I share the concerns of my colleague. You know, I think that, that it is concerning that when we talk about some of the, particularly around some of the specialty programming, whether it's our art school, the STEM school, this committee has gone to great lengths to create these, these specialized educational opportunities for our students because we value them, because we want to have those opportunities for our students. And it is troubling when a, a change happens in a very fundamental way to what those, those institutions are able to offer. So I certainly look forward to getting the information back from the administration around this decision, around how we can address it to ensure that, we certainly need to meet our special ed obligations. Same is true for the, the health programming. But that, you know, having set priorities as a committee as we went through the budget process, they were conscious decisions that were made by, by this committee to support and to protect those, those specialty programming areas. And it is, it is disappointing to see that that would have happened after the fact. So I will, as I say, certainly be supporting the motion and looking forward to the answers, and more importantly, to the solutions that we'll be able to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Further discussion on this motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, the motion is accepted. Next motion of the evening by Ms. Scott. Request superintendent prepare a plan to provide the same health curriculum in all of our middle schools. Seconded by Ms. Leary. Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd start off just by saying that some of our health schools, middle schools currently have full-time health teachers at them. Some of them don't have full-time health teachers, and they have a Healthy Futures drop-in program during their specials. Some of them have a hybrid anti-bullying slash Healthy Futures program. And I just find it troubling that there's an inconsistency across the district. It's something we've, we've discussed as a committee for quite a long time. It's gone back to Dr. Scott talking about how the inconsistency needs to end. And here we are still, and I just feel, especially as a parent, if it's a standard that's important for our students to learn, then it's important for them all to learn, not just in individual school. So I don't know if that is, you know, shared health teachers. I don't know what the answer is, but I just think there should be some, some consistency. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. Superintendent, is that the standard in other communities, that there is one set standard curriculum, just in this particular case? Or?
There usually are always standards. I mean, there are the state standards, and in most cases, it is, it is pretty standard, what happens across middle schools or elementary schools. And so, give me a chance to learn what, what's happening in our schools, and I'll be very happy to report back to you on what we have, and if there are any discrepancies, not just at the level of titles of courses or something, if the content is different, we'll, we will look into the rationales behind it, and we will report back. And if something needs to be fixed, we will certainly, at the time of reporting, we will also report to you the alternatives that we were going to take, the actions we'll take to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion is adopted. Last motion of the evening by Ms. Scott and Mr. Conway. Request the superintendent report on our compliance with Mass General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section sixty-nine, and address any non-compliance. Ladies before gentlemen, Ms. Scott?
Okay. Thank you. I won't read the entire law, but I'll read one section of the law. It says that each teacher at the commencement of the first class of each day in all grades in all public schools shall lead the class in a group recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. It doesn't say they shall, it says, I mean, I'm sorry, it doesn't say they may. It says they shall. And it was troubling for me to learn that all of our classrooms are not saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Of course, an individual child may opt out from the pledge, but it's still supposed to be led every day per the state law. It's patriotic to say it and respectful for those who are far from our ability to say it. And I'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Actually, she took the same sentence that I was going to take out. But I applaud Ms. Scott for putting this on, because when we talked about it briefly, I, she asked if I would, if I wanted to go on with it, with it, and I said absolutely. I think it's extremely important, and it's also rather disturbing that there are some schools and some classrooms that do not... schools and some classrooms that do not, that do not pledge allegiance to the flag each day. I'm, I'm kind of shocked at that, to be honest with you, but it's my understanding that, that there are schools, there are classrooms that do not, that do not follow through on that. And also, to follow with, to continue with that, Chapter 71, Section 69, there is actually a clause down there, it's a penalty, and it's a financial penalty if you don't do it after, I think it's a week or two weeks, that it, it costs the principal X amount of dollars and/or the teacher and/or. So I think it's something that we certainly should clear up, and what it is, it's, it's certainly, I think it gives the, it gives the student an understanding of what the flag is all about and how important it is. So again, I applaud Ms. Scott on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion is accepted and adopted. Move on to subcommittee reports, we have two subcommittee reports. It was already reported on by the chair, Mr. Larry, but with that, we have finance subcommittee approval of minutes of the meeting of Wednesday, August 19th. Chair would like to recognize the chairperson of the finance subcommittee, Mr. Larry.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, Your Honor.
Motion to accept the minutes by Mr. Larry, seconded by Mr. Conway. Discussion on the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, the minutes are accepted, and the report is accepted as a report of progress and placed on file. Second subcommittee report, we have the curriculum, curriculum subcommittee report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Tuesday, August 25th, 2015. Chair would like to recognize the chairwoman of that subcommittee, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. In attendance that evening were myself and also Ms. Scott from central office, we had Assistant Superintendent Claire Abrams. We did go through a number of, of items, really primarily discussion about the upcoming school year, obviously, and preparations for that in terms of our curriculum and instruction efforts. First topics, we kind of went through some of the, some of the changes that we'll be able to look at this year. Recent purchases have included a new phonics program that will be implemented at the elementary schools. We're putting in place a new pilot curriculum in mathematics. It's entitled Eureka Math, and looking to ensure that we have all the materials and professional development around that, so that teachers will be able to access that effectively in their work with students. We did, as we have discussed previously, both in the subcommittee and here at the school committee, we did make a major purchase of science kits so that we can ensure that they will be available at all the schools. We won't be sharing them in this current year. And then, in the social studies area, we will be offering children discovering justice, which is a program looking at primarily in K through five, and again, planning to bring teachers together so that they can get the appropriate professional development to ensure that this is appropriately implemented in our, in our district. We were also provided with the integrated curriculum maps for the entire district. These are available on the website. I'd certainly encourage any parents watching to go and, and download them and look at the, what their students will have in store for them for the year. I think they're extremely helpful, just in order for families to be able to track progress and be able to anticipate over the course of the year. So it's a, it's a very colorful and impressive, very large piece of paper that tracks everything out, but I absolutely encourage people and families to take a look at it, because I do think it's a very valuable artifact for, for any family who has a child in the Lowell Public Schools. We also received the updated brochures. These were implemented a number of years ago. I think they've proven to be popular with, with families. I've had several people comment to me on them over the course of the, the last few years. Again, a, a great instrument that, that allows us to share information with families and parents so that they can understand what their students are, are working on during the, during the school day, and give them the information they need so that they can be well-informed as to their students' progress and, and upcoming challenges as they go through every school year. So that was the, what we reviewed at the subcommittee, and I would submit those as my report from that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Further discussion, comments on the report from the curriculum subcommittee? Motion to approve the minutes by Ms. Rosberg, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, minutes are accepted, report of progress and placed on file. Next item on the agenda, that concludes subcommittee reports. We'll now move to reports of the superintendent. The first report is a Narcan update. We thank, we thank Lisa Gilbicki again for staying. We're going to take her out of order again. You're spending your summer with us, we appreciate it, but she insisted on not being taken out of order. But with that, Mr. Superintendent, Narcan update?
Yes, I will defer.
See how this works?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the school committee for letting me be here to at least discuss an important topic, I think, for Lowell as a city and also for a community. We did conduct Narcan training with the help Trinity, Lowell House, and representative from the Lowell Health Department on Monday, August 31st. All school nurses and per diem nurses, which is same as substitute, substitute nurses, were trained in the city of Lowell, and Narcan was provided for all schools except for one right now, where we're down one kit, and that is the Le Blank School. So we do have them for all 28 public schools and alternative schools. Any questions regarding that? They will be, nurses were trained, and they'll be the only ones responsible for that Narcan in the schools. It will be kept in their emergency bags in their nurse's office, and there is no harm if somebody gets a hold of it and uses it unless they had an opiate overdose.
Mr. Larry?
Just one, thank you very much for staying through the whole meeting, we appreciate it. Just a quick question, the Le Blank School, that's primarily like a high school-age school, how long, I guess, through you, Mayor, through to, to the Health Department? How long do we need to take to get that kit for the Le Blank, I guess? That's kind of the big question.
I'm hoping by the end of next week. Yeah, it, it should be very quickly, it was just a formality of not having enough kits during the training, and, and it was not a choice of eliminating one particular school, that just happened to be the school that, we didn't have a nurse quite assigned to that school yet, so that was deciding factor.
No, thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ms. Martin, could you come down? I want, I want to speak on this. Thank you, Ms., Ms. Vice Chair. I put, thank you for the report. It's, regrettably, it's becoming a greater and larger problem, almost on a daily basis here in the city, and we're no exception, we have the governor involved, and I just had a, I, I know that there is a plan in, in place, and I think this is the, I think it's, it's, it's very important that we're beginning this outreach, because I think we're behind the eight ball a little bit, and I don't think any of us could anticipate the magnitude of the problem and where it's going, and, and, you know, all the boundaries that are so not typical with, with problems like this. So my question is, the stop addiction in its track, the public awareness campaign to parents and, and children, when, when is that supposed, is that just in the schools? Are they going to take place in the schools, or what is, because that, that's the first bullet on here, and I know the governor is, you know, has a working group coming up, and he's, you know, he'll be up in Lowell soon to speak about this, and the DA is on board, but I think getting the message out to our, the kids in the school as soon as possible or is critical.
That public awareness campaign is specifically for across the state of Massachusetts, and you probably have seen a number of the ads and heard them on the news and on the television, and that's part of that campaign. We continue to work with the Health Department and the Curriculum Department to investigate curriculum. Last year, we were able, through a grant, to bring in a program for every one of our middle, upper middle school students, and as well as the high school, and to all of our families citywide. So it is something that's on our radar, and we continue, I believe, that curriculum met with the Health Department just last week or the week prior, to have a discussion further about continuing these efforts.
So is that, is that sort of a one-time type of thing, where we get someone to come to the schools, or is this, I mean, I think this is kind of a message that has to be continuously repeated in some manner, some fashion, whether it's through a grant or in the health, in the health curriculum. It's, it's okay to talk about it, but sometimes it's real-life instances that, I, I just really feel, and I know we all do, I'm not alone, that it's, this epidemic has taken over and stopping in its track. It's such, such an appropriate campaign because it's, it's just so true. So it's, it is happening, the Health Department is, I mean, we, we talk about it a lot, but knowing that it is in the classroom, and if we can integrate it, Mr. Superintendent, while we did adopt the prior motion on having a standardized health curriculum, I, I think this should be, you know, right at the top of the list, and they get it right off the bat, and they get it more than once, so, well, that's, that's, that's good to know, I appreciate it, that we are, because if we don't get it into the schools, we're not going to get a handle on this thing.
I could just speak to, several years ago, we did have much state funding in the health protection grants, and we had health curriculum throughout the city, and through each year, those monies getting cut. So, so there is a, a curriculum that is aligned to the standards, that is intact, and we all agree wholeheartedly that prevention is the way to go. And we know, if you can track, if you look at across the state, the data on many of the incidents that have occurred, you can see that the substance abuse problem has increased dramatically over the years, and it really does align with, you know, the, the limited prevention programs that, you know, across the state were cut.
So, through you, Madam Chair, what was, what was once the original, because when the governor comes up here, and he comes up here on a regular basis, and he's been talking about this, and it's, you know, I think he's, and he's looking for answers, when we say, what do you need? Yeah, we need treatment, we understand that, we need money for enforcement, but we also need it for prevention. What was a dollar figure that we once received? So when the governor comes up in the next couple of weeks, we say, you know what we need? We need money to go back into our schools through a grant program, if that is the way the money came in, to target and to continue to send this, this message, to reiterate it in our classrooms.
So this was several years back now, I'm dating myself, but this, so it was, at that time, I was the coordinator for the district, and we were bringing in through three to four grants, federal and state grants, we were bringing in close to, two to, at times, up to $3 million. So then it, it kept dwindling over time.
And where would that money, how would that money be used?
The money was used directly for health programming.
To hire somebody for?
We had health educators that worked in the schools and traveled, shared, shared responsibilities in the schools.
So they went from classroom to classroom, speaking about the problems, educating, informing, doing outreach?
Right. Elementary through high, through high school. We, we do have health educators at the high school level currently, but, and then just a few at our middle school, so it's not consistent at this time.
Could you get the committee the name of those grants, perhaps? I think because, I mean-
Sure, I have them in my files.
When, when we have these forums, I mean, this is, this is hot, this is good, this is real-life information that there is a correlation, we've seen data, we've seen the success of spending money to prevent this, and what happens when we don't spend this money and you see this escalation?
I will do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Larry?
Not, not a lot to expand upon, but I think during the budget cuts, this is where you see, people don't think about the grants, folks don't look at the Title I and other title grants that have been significantly diminished, which don't come up in the regular budget, which impacted actual, you know, human resources to implement these programs. I think the key, though, and I think, first of all, I appreciate you working prior to the school year with the Health Department, I think that needs to continue. We do need to get to the elementary level. We also need to get into our sports programs, because a lot of this is derived from sports injuries. You have a lot of these physicians who administer medications, quite frankly, they shouldn't be administering. We need to make sure we're educating our health trainers, make sure they're cognizant of how to follow up, review what the policies are of the folks that we have aligned with for orthopedics or what have you. That's imperative, because that's where most of this starts from. Not all of it, but a lot of it. And, but, you know, back to the education, unfortunately, you got to start really in the elementary level. You know, high school's great, but it's really, at that point, it's, it's a hard catch. Thank you, and thank you for your efforts, though, I appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Considering Ms. Gilbicki's been standing there this whole time. So I get off subject a little bit, so I, I apologize, but can I ask you, it's kind of like going on the third rail. It's good to be prepared, I appreciate it, it's very important, and I say, God forbid this would ever happen, has, you know, the $64,000 question, has there been any incidences where there has been a need for this, or we have just taken precautionary measures?
At this point, we're taking precautionary measures, however, saying that around the school grounds, there have been a need for it. So saying that, I had a report just the other day of one of the schools, that at 6:00 in the morning, right outside of the school grounds, there was somebody being revived with Narcan. So it hasn't happened inside the school that I am aware of at this point, but there's always the potential, and just keep in mind that even though we're having this in the elementary schools as well, it's a community initiative. It's, I look at it very similarly to an AED being in a building. There's, it's a life-saving measure that you never know when you're going to have to use it. So are we saying that we're potentially going to use it on a third grade? God, we hope not. However, there are parents, staff members, and community members that are coming into our buildings that may need the need for it, and if, if the nurse is available, they are trained to administer it. No staff members will be trained on this, it's only the nurses at this time, and it's just another safety measure that we can help administer that in the case of an opiate overdose prior to EMS arriving.
No, any, anything that we can do, and that's why we put them in the police, we put them in the cruisers, the, you know, fire apparatus, anytime we can and we do, then we, then we should, and this is no exception, so I understand it a little bit more clearly. I didn't suspect it was for the students, but it is to, you know, just for safety and anything we can do to save a life, that's, that's great. And only the nurses will be trained?
Only the nurses have, they were all trained?
No administrators, no principals, no, I mean, are there nurses pretty much there?
Most schools, except for the alternative schools, we have, for the majority of the schools are full-time, except for those alternative schools.
And again, I know you-
The alternative schools, again, would be that 911 emergency process.
Is there, has there been any thought into having someone at that school? I mean, because it's kind of the time-
Yes, there has. And again, it comes down to finances of, of support, of hiring nurses to have them in every school, which would obviously be my goal, and I know Janine Durkin's goal as well, we've talked about this with certain schools that would benefit, just to keep attendance rates up in some of those alternative schools, if you have another voice of making phone calls, asking them why they weren't in school, and if there was barriers and stuff. So this has been a long conversation that we've had many times with the superintendent's office.
So should somebody be trained at those schools? I mean, it seems like those schools-
We cannot provide the training, the nurses, or neither can I. I'm not a train-the-trainer.
Okay.
But that's something that we could look, definitely, not saying no, but we can actually look into that.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Entertained motion to accept this as a report of progress by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durkin and Ms. Gilbicki, that's very informative. Moving on to the next report of the superintendent, we have community eligibility program. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a, I think something that, as you all know, had come up earlier with the previous administration. At the time, there were a lot of questions asked, not only with respect to the community eligibility program within the context of FUCHA- eligibility program within the context of food services, but also what does it, how does it impact other things, other programs or grants that we have where, when we utilize the free and reduced ratios. At the time, we were still seeking questions and at the same, we were working very closely with Worcester Public Schools because they were trying to do the same thing and they were also seeking, seeking those answers. Since then, we met with the folks from the state and I think when we went over all the, with, with respect to the food service, I think it was very clear with everybody, it was a, it was a goal right from the beginning, it was the right thing to do, but we were more, the questions that concerned us were what happens to the utilization of the, that rate. And as the report indicates, you know, we, we've been pretty satisfied with the answers they've given us or what they intend to do and we have recommended to go with the program. And I know that the federal, it is a federal program, that they really accept people on a rolling basis, they, they have no hardcore deadline, but the state, for the purpose of planning, they really wanted us to make a decision before August 31st. I'm going to defer to our Director of Food Services to tell us a little bit, report a little bit about, within the context of food services and then we, we'll talk a little bit within, outside of food services.
Hi. Thank you for having me here tonight. We've been investigating this provision for the past three years. Each time we ran the numbers, we were able to identify that would cost the district money in order to implement this provision. In last April, they opened up a new filter in the virtual gateway portal, which allowed about 900 more students to be categorically eligible, which changed all our ratings. So based upon the data on April 1st, we were, had 61.05% of our students are eligible due to SNAP, TANF, Medicaid, homelessness, runaways. So based on that, the formula has put us into a position where we'd have 97% of our students would be, have access to free meals and 3% would be unpaid. So just the ratio that we have with the reimbursement rates, the paid students, their percentage is offset by the income that we bring in from the free students. So as the Superintendent noted, it was a no-brainer from the food side. We did bring the state in and we discussed the other challenges that we were, we were kind of stuck on, how it impacted Title I, Chapter 70 and other grants. We were convinced that, based upon their information, that we would be held harmless based upon that information. Everybody at the table felt very comfortable. The challenge was, is that it was, if we didn't go on September 1st, we weren't going to be able to go really until Thanksgiving break because of the work that goes into pulling this off. We had to make a lot of changes programmatically behind the scenes and I needed those four days before the start of school or we would have had to wait until November to implement the program. Yesterday was our first day. We had an 8% increase in participation. We didn't run out of food anywhere. We still have some tweaking to do. We have to do some massaging. We have some training to do with staff. We will work on egress, flow of lines. We will work school by school because this is a, a school by school challenge. All the lines are set up differently. We have different accessibility. So my team is really eager. My staff is, is very engaged and ready to go.
Mr. Leary?
Thank you. Well, well done. Thank you, appreciate it. Just, you and I spoke, Dr. Calafawi, this morning. So we did speak with the Mass School Building Authority and they're saying, because of the high school project, they're ultimately saying we're not going to be affected financially by entering to this program. And I think that's kind of what, is that kind of the, the case you're saying to us tonight, that if we enter into this program, when we go into the feasibility study and potentially further into the high school, whether it's a new building or just a rehabilitation, we financially shouldn't be held accountable for anything. It won't impact that 78, 79% of reimbursement. Is that-
Right. The, the Finance Department, the State Department, the Education Department has been working very hard with the, the, the Mass Association for School Buildings about this and they're very well aware of it because we're not the only ones, obviously, looking at that. And it was very clear, they repeated it more than once and we had assurances from two parts of the department, not just from the finance, but from also the folks that we talked to, the, the ones who run the CEP program, that it was very clearly, everyone's understanding that whatever formula they're working on, and they, they are working on something to finalize, alternative measures on how to, to go about it rather than using the free and reduced measures that they used to use. If those measures were to harm any district, in the sense that they would bring them less funding or less support, they will hold that district harmless, meaning they would use whatever latest statistics we have, with in our cases, the 79%, close to 79%.
So what you're saying then again, is so the high school project, which we anticipate if we go forward, I guess 79, 78%, that still would hold accountable.
Right.
Right? We wouldn't reduce, there wouldn't be a percentage reduction based on entering into this program?
That's the assurance we had from-
From the MSBA. And then from, I guess, really the, from DESI, Chapter 70 is the same thing, is that act, we shouldn't see any, we shouldn't be held harmless for any issues that may come up financially?
Absolutely. The same assurance was given to us on the Chapter 70 because they are, as you know, there is a commission working currently on revising the whole formula of Chapter 70. That's one of the areas they're focusing on is, as we go into the CEP program, what measures would they be using?
But they wouldn't be revising against us because we're in this program?
No, no.
Okay. And then it goes lastly, just the, the title grants, Title I especially, we would, is that the same understanding? We wouldn't be held, if there, if there's an issue, we wouldn't be held financially respons, not responsible, financially, there wouldn't be a reduction in Title I benefits because we went into this program?
No.
Okay. The only other thing I'd say, I mean, obviously, you know, being someone who didn't have it before, now I do, that's nice. The other thing I'd have to say is we want to make sure we're letting the city administration, especially the financial side, make sure they're cognizant of what's going on because they're going to be making recommendations to the city council about the finances. And as you know better than anybody, that every 1% right now, if you're talking about a $250 million project, that's a 250, $2.5 million reduction, every percent taken off. So that's, you know, it, it could take a deal and, and end a deal. And so I appreciate that if you could sit down with them and just let them know what your thought process is and that from a financial standpoint, we're not going to be harmed, I guess is the best way to say it.
Yeah, I, I think what we plan to do is we'll, Mr. Gennell is going to work on getting the, the state, the Department of Finance from the ESE, invite them to, to come out here and have a joint meeting with the city folks.
Good. No, I think it'll be good. They're, the city's been a real good partner, especially with, you know, just passing the feasibility study. The high school project is obviously significant. This idea is obviously significant as well, but thank you very much.
Right. Just one last point, if I may, is that following, but at least what we know, they were telling us is if we follow just the timeline of our project at the high school, during the feasibility study, which probably be the transition period, by the time we get into any real, real construction, we will already be in the CEP whether we like it or not because this is the, they're, they're heading that way anyway and they will be using the new measures anyway.
No, and I, I think that's, it's important that we need to make sure we're communicating with all our partners too and if, if long as we're communicating effectively, so they're cognizant of what we've done, that won't hold us, won't have any financial harm to us, I think that's fantastic. I think outlining that tonight is imperative and to just make sure that the financial team, we're going to make ultimately the recommendations to the council, have that comfort level in that communication, I think we're, we're going to be in a good position. And I think that's just something I want to echo here, that we actually do that.
We will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Leary, does this mean that you won't be making your child's lunches anymore? Is that, there is a special-
Not me.
Mr. Conway then Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to applaud you, Doctor, for going forward with this. And again, this is something that I think certainly is going to help out the, the school system, it's going to help out families, it's going to help the city out. And, and I also, I want to extend a, a thank you to Kim Scott for bringing it to, to your attention. I know we, we've been talking about it before and again, I want to thank you for your report. But I, I also, if, if, if I get this correct, that, that there was a, a Mr. Jerry Nutter that actually gave this information, I talked to you about that, Ms. Scott, and I think that he should certainly be thanked for, for bringing that forward. So again, I thank you for your efforts and, and obviously, there's a, there's caution because nobody wants to go forward and, and have a, a program that might in the end cost money, but I think that with your, the, the work that you have done, I think that I feel pretty, I feel secure that we are not going to be in any harm at all. So I, again, I applaud you for this. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the administration for their answer to my motion, I appreciate that. I'd also like to say that I can understand the, the comfort level that you, you have moving forward, Dr. Calafawi and my colleague, Mr. Conway. We have, however, been in situations where DESI has said one thing and done something else. This city paid hundreds of thousands of dollars in a lawsuit because DESI, I'm not going to say forced, but strongly encouraged us to pursue a path and then when lawsuits followed, basically forgot they knew us and, and we were left to pay those damages. So the, the, taking the time to go in to have that meeting, I certainly appreciate and I appreciate that their intention is to hold harmless our district and any other district. It would be great to have that in writing from them as we move forward. The federal level, I think, is another question as well. I know that you had mentioned Title I, that we will be held harmless there as well. I'm not 100% sure that DESI can actually even answer that question because it's obviously a federal question. So I think we should certainly be reaching out to our, our Congresswoman and to our other representatives to ensure that they're aware of this because those are decisions that are going to be happening in a budget cycle in, in Washington. So we're going to need to make sure that our representatives are aware of that. I am certainly a, a strong supporter of this. It's, you know, what had prompted the investigation at the beginning of wanting to be able to provide this service for our students and wanting to ensure that we didn't have the problem which we had had for many years of, you know, outstanding bills at the end of the year that we had no, no options for really balancing the books. So I think that this is a great way to move forward and ensure that our students do have what they need to be successful. The most fundamental thing they need is a breakfast and lunch to get through the day so that they can be prepared for learning. And I certainly appreciated all of my colleagues' support when this was initially brought up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Further discussion, Ms., Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also just like to echo my, my colleagues' comments and just applaud the Superintendent for this, taking the initiative. This motion was brought up by my colleague, Ms. Martin. It was a great motion and it's long overdue. We have parents that are really struggling in this district. We also have parents that are not filling out the free lunch forms that, that should be on free lunch and this really takes that work away from our district. I can imagine that our staff must be, I would think, ecstatic over this, the amount of paperwork that this takes. And there's been quite a bit of dialogue about, you know, how this is paid for. Well, to take the time to exclude 30% of the people that don't qualify for free lunch really must take a lot of time and administration, a lot of money just to exclude those 30 people. So I'd much rather see this, this money go towards feeding, you know, those borderline people that just don't qualify but are having a hard time getting by every day. And again, I applaud the Superintendent for going back and taking the initiative to do this and I applaud my colleague for bringing up the motion to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Further discussion on this motion? So just to clarify, Mr. Superintendent, 90%, this is 90%, 97% reimbursement, right? It doesn't cost the district anything. In fact, we even had, we had a deficit last year, we bought 153,000 from, from students or families that we did not collect. So hopefully that was, I, I thought we made a transfer at the end of the year for about 150,000.
It was actually people owed us money for not paying. We actually made it in the black, it was like a lot of money in the black.
So Ms.-
The department-
But there were outstanding folks that people didn't pill bills. That's not a deficit though.
So this could presumably cover those families that couldn't pay or didn't pay.
Absolutely.
Right. Okay. Entertained a motion to accept the recommendation by Ms., by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Scott. Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron? Mary Elliott?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
Motion approved. Now entertain a motion to accept the report of the Report of Progress and place on file by Ms. Rossikowicz, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor signify by saying aye and the opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Glassy, for, for coming this evening. Thank you for the explanation and thank you for your work to help the, to help the district and-
Thank you very much.
-getting this program up and running. Next item on the agenda, still under reports from the Superintendent, Lincoln School, Mill City Grove's Community Garden update. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes. This, this report is in response to a motion made by Mr. Gendron on the request to look into the feasibility of using a 40, a lot, a property at 47 Lincoln Street, which is right behind Lincoln School, to use it as a garden, a school garden and community garden. We looked into, we contacted the, the city and they've looked at it amongst themselves and, and got us, the, one of the answers that we've given you earlier on was in the report that, and they explained to us verbally that this is a property that they, they don't think that there will be any problem using it for the school, as a school garden, but it's really limited for the exclusive use of the, the school and not necessarily as a community. They, since then, something we did not include in, unfortunately, in the report because it just came in today around 3:30 PM, was they've, they have, we made the official request to say, yes, please go ahead, do whatever is necessary, tell us what we need to do, the process, and they have already assigned it to one of the city solicitor's office, in the city solicitor's office, and they're looking into it. And as soon as they finish their research on it, they will present it to the, the council and then, and then we'll take it from there, depending on what the council goes with it and we'll, we'll, we'll come back. Our intention is that if everything goes well and, and the city approves the use of it, will be to use it as a school garden for the Lincoln School.
Very good. Further questions, comments for the Superintendent on this report? Seeing none, we'll look forward to, to getting more information on this and adopting it on the city side. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Motion to accept the report as a Report of Progress and placed on file by Ms. Rossikowicz, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye and the opposed, motion carries. Next most, report from the Superintendent is the Lowell Strategic Plan. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, again, this is in response to a motion, I think we talked about it a little bit last time, that we have launched the effort, the process for the development of strategic plan in the two days of the leadership summit that we had with all the leaders and I think it went, went fairly well on the first day, they, everybody enjoyed it. Since then, we've continued to work on it. We have now what, almost like a core of administrators who, who are working on this strategic plan process. The next step that we have identified, a couple, actually two steps. One is to, do we recommend to, to go with an external outfit or do we try to do it ourselves? Do we have the skills and the, and the resources to do, to carry the, the process ourselves? And two, to start establishing the, the partnerships with the stakeholders, which would start with the steering committee at the beginning and then various other committees for the, the different issues we'll be tackling. I think since then, we, we, we think and that we are pretty confident that we do have the local resources to carry out the process ourselves at this point and, and we are going to be shortly after today, putting in, putting a, information out there for our local and community partners that if there is any interest out there, that they should send us, whether their own candidacy or nominations of anyone they feel should be on the steering committee. We will start by forming a steering committee, hopefully by mid, to the third week of September and then also work with the, with later on, the various- and then also work with the, later on, the various committees that are needed. It is our intention that the school, that whatever committees will be heavily stacked with community stakeholders, not just school personnel. We're looking at people from all parts of Lowell, whether it's business community, parents, just, they don't have to be parents, as long as they're part of Lowell. So that's what we're looking at. Internally, on our part, we're continuing to work with it. On the next PD day that we're going to have with the leaders, we will continue developing and looking at the initial stages of the process, which would be the mission, revisiting our own mission, what we have now from the, and our own core values, and then bringing all of that to work, and hopefully by, again, we still have the same plan, that hopefully by the end of, you know, this year, that we have a completed plan.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
You're welcome.
Questions, comments, discussion on the strategic plan as a report on the strategic plan? Seeing a motion to accept the report as a report of progress and placed on file by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, report is accepted. Next report of the evening is a personnel report. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes. This is the usual personnel report prepared by our HR department, and I would respectfully request, unless you have questions, a motion to accept the report.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Moved to approve by Ms. Rossikowicz, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, the motion carries, the report is accepted. Next report of the evening by Mr. Superintendent, list of eligible teachers.
Again, another one of those customary lists that's prepared by our HR, and I would respectfully request the motion to accept the report, unless you have questions.
Moved to approve by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. Discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, that motion passes as well. Eligible teachers accepted. Next section of the agenda, we have convention and conference requests. There are two requests to send students at their own cost to travel, first from the headmaster, Martin, and then Lowell High School, boys and girls across country. Entertained a motion to take both of these conferences together, as one motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion passes. Motion to approve both of these requests by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Scott. Questions? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Not a question, just an opportunity to, you know, remind the administration at the high school that there are opportunities for scholarships for students who want to attend and participate in this, particularly this Berlin Prague Krakow trip, which seems pretty amazing. And a shame that school community members don't get invited, but there, the Martha McQuaid Adventure Fund does exist to fund students fully, for the full cost of the trip, if they submit an essay. So I would certainly encourage the administration at the high school to take advantage of that. It's a, would be a great opportunity to support a student in a really amazing adventure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Thank you for that update for anyone watching at home as well. Motion to approve has been made and seconded. Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
Motion carries. That concludes the business before the school committee this evening. Just one item of note, just like to take an opportunity to, and I'm not sure if anybody wants to join me in song, but we wanted to wish you, Mr. Superintendent, a happy birthday. It's his birthday today. Are there any takers? It's amazing, you finally made the ripe age of 39, but that's a-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. No, we, we won't sing for you. We want you, we want you to, we want you to come back. That concludes the business. I hope you have a good birthday, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, Assistant Superintendents, as well as staff. Entertained a motion to adjourn by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, that motion carries. This meeting stands adjourned.